I'd like to call the meeting's order for the Eastland Board of Ed special meeting for public hearing on the 2023-2024 school budget.
We're listening.
You want to do it?
We're listening.
Well, we're going to do the pledge, so why don't we let this? If you're going to come in, then you need to come in.
Thank you! Thank you! We're listening. 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 Thank you! We're listening.
Okay, we can hold the meeting's order and if everyone can rise, please rise to the flag of the meeting.
To the pledge of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, united rock, individual, liberty, peace, justice, and honor.
Thanks, everyone, for coming out. I appreciate it. We're going to start, and some of you have heard this timeline before, but there's people who are here who have not heard it, so some people are hearing this for the first time. So I think it's good to set the context for the budget. I'm Eric Dowdman from Board of Ed. Sorry to those who don't know. We started this process back in video memory. It is a process that we've honed over a number of years and found that this is a good process for us to develop a budget. And we start with the budget workshops, and we have two of them. One we had on November 14th, the other on December 15th. And what those workshops are is to really give the Board of Ed, the administration, the Board of Ed, all a chance to just talk about what's going on as we look at budgets as you roll forward, just costs of the increases for staff costs, the increases for other costs that you see, some repairs, maintenance, other things. And you roll forward a budget to see where we sit, how's it all look? And then you get some talk about maybe some programs, maybe new programs we want to start for the new year or other things that might be changing. It just gives us all a good chance to reflect and see how, what's looking as we look ahead into '23, '24, what's the budget look like? And in that time, as we rolled it forward, we could see on the December 15th, the roll forward was 10.3%, which, you know, is extremely, extremely high, highest I'm on the board now eight years, highest I've seen, probably the highest weeks of people who've been on the board a lot longer than I, and it's probably the highest that they've seen as you roll forward. So with Board of Ed, we all said, wow, that's real high. You know, Jeff, can you work with your team and come, you know, come on with, come in with something lower than that? And what would it look like? And so then Jeff, on January 9th, presented his budget, the superintendent's budget, of 6.97% increase. And we saw that in order to hit a number which is the highest that Jeff has ever proposed in his time as superintendent here previously, it was requiring eighteen and a half rolls, reduction in rolls, to hit a pretty high number in itself. And so that was really helpful for us to see, okay, that's what it's going to take to hit a number like that. And then, as a number of you have attended these meetings, and we've had several of them, and they were some late ones, as we went through it as a Board of Ed, we discussed, okay, where do we want to be as a Board of Ed, and what do we, you know, as we reflect? And I think we got a lot of feedback from the staff, from the town, from students, parents, emails, people coming to public comment. And we got a lot of feedback, which we really take to heart. We all listen to it. We all read the emails. We all listen to the public comment. And it gives us a chance to then also dig deeper into our budget, look and see, what are our opportunities? Where could we find some savings? Is there anything we can do? How can we make this work? And after, you know, spending a lot of time and having discussions, where we've gotten to, and what you're going to see Jeff is going to present after, is our current thinking. So for as a Board of Ed, is an 8.88% increase. We can be adding back those positions that we had, that were proposed, reduced. We can officially, our official, after this, we have our public hearing. We want to hear from the public and get more information, and then we officially go and have a vote after this meeting. So there's a meeting at seven o'clock where we will go and actually vote with the proposed, our proposal for the Board of Ed, to then send to the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance, where then they will deliberate, look at those numbers, and look at how that impacts the town overall. So that's where we've gotten to. The meetings for Board of Finance meeting, I think, is March 27th? The 28th, sorry, March 28th. So there's some time between now and the 28th, which gives the Board of Finance a chance to look at our numbers and go through our proposal. So that's where, just want to give a kind of how did we get to today, which is where we are now at the public hearing. And I want to pass it over to Jeff, who will walk through kind of how we came up with the budget.
Thank you, Eric. First, let me just start by reminding, if you use new or as seen information, you know, on the budget, everything is out on our website. So I encourage you, if you haven't had an opportunity or if you want to dig deeper, look at other information, videos, taped meetings, they're all out on our website. We encourage you to go there, pass it along to any of the community members out there for their review as well. So as Chairman Dowdman mentioned, we had started off at the 10.30 at that December 16th workshop that we held. At that time, we, to reduce based off of feedback and discussions that we had at that second workshop, ended up with a reduction down to the 6.97. And then after continued discussions, deliberations, a lot of dialogue, a lot of feedback, which we appreciate all of that, the 18.5 positions that we had adds 1 point, just 1.1 million back in the budget, putting it at, currently, the Board of Ed is Chairman Dowdman's set thinking and potentially proposing, and we'll vote on after this, an increase of 8.88%. So just so you can see the history of, you know, how that, how that happened. To get there, and part of, actually, part of those numbers is reflected, and most of you have, many of you have seen, you know, this slide, we've gone through this quite a bit, the drivers for this year's budget, and we really, you know, they're focused on three things, salaries, its benefits, and its inflation. And we've adjusted this slide to meet the numbers associated with the 8.88%. So salaries, I'll read each of these again. There's packets, if you grab one, or if you have, if you want to take one, or you have this previous package, you can read these again. But, you know, salaries, we have the contractual obligations, increases in there, and, you know, staff meeting, the requirements of minimum wage as well. Things are, continue to be on the increase. Then benefits, 39.40% of the budget. Benefits has been a big driver, something that is unfortunate. We have it at a 12% increase right now for next year. That could modify itself based on the feedback we get from the state, and hopefully it will come down. Right now, they did lower their recommendation a little bit, down between the eight and 10% increase. We will make some decisions moving forward with the town as to, you know, where do we finally set that number? We won't know the final increase in health insurance, and again, for those of you who don't know, part of the state partnership plan, us and the town together collectively, we won't know until April, May-ish timeframe as to what the final percent increase will be. But that's a huge, that's a huge drive, $1,897,396 of the overall budget increase. Typically, you like to see those, obviously, much, much lower. This year, the year before, it was a 1.25% increase, just to give some context, and many of you are going to say that before, and it was higher this year. The last one, we know that, everybody in, across the town, state, the country, is dealing with inflation and inflationary issues. That's the same thing for us here with our buildings and plant operations. Costs have all gone up, and are increasing, energy costs, et cetera, almost $400,000 in operating expenses. So that in itself is close to 8% in the overall increase. Just to reference, 540,000 is 1% increase in dollars associated with any of our, each of our, you know, percent budget, each percent of the budget increase. So it's pretty close to that. So those are, those are the drivers, as we've talked about in the past, and to give a little more context of the overall budget. And with fixed expenses, we've shown this slide, we show it each year to reference the fact that we are driven by those contractual obligations. There's a very small slipper, as you can see, of supplies, textbooks, software equipment, you know, that has flexibility, and we always attack those and cut those. And that's, that's a challenge. That's something that, obviously, we want to do. But we have fixed expenses, 97% of the overall operating budget sits on contracts and contractual agreements and obligations. One to reference, class sizes, has been a big part of our discussions over the last month or so, and the fact that the Board of Ed takes very seriously as to itself and all this, maintaining appropriate class sizes for our school district and our each grade level. And at the elementary level, you can see K through 4 here, we really try and stay within these guidelines, and I commend the Board of Ed for their efforts in this, in having, you know, this guiding document as a support and a reference for us to really try and stay within those realms. And our class sizes, with what we've got, our proposals are sitting in these, in these general areas, which is, which is good. So I may know there's a lot of online too, and reference, we've got, you know, different scenarios of the elementary slides, or of the elementary class sizes that you can take a look at. I did not add those here because we did that at the coffee talk and some discussion, but those are out there if you want to see different scenarios of class sizes and growth. Wanted to just point this out in relation to, you know, this is sometimes, often is a question from the community as to, you know, what's our projected enrollment, our continued enrollment as we move forward across the district? And the studies are showing, as we go out to 2030, you can see, Brian, I'm trying this and it's not working, so what? We had, we had a new, oh wait, there we go, there we go. You can see right here, 2032, '33, projecting out, we basically stay the same, 25, just under 2,600 students. We're just over 20, we're at over 2,600 now. So again, projected out enrollment, you don't know, there's a lot of movement in town and a lot of fluctuation, you know, can factor into that. But projections are leaving us very steady. So that's important, because here we look ahead to what our needs are for the district and our staffing needs as well moving forward. With that being said, steady enrollment is important, but it's also important, we want to note, is the prevalence rate of special education and the number of students that are requiring special education services. Now, that has been on the increase, and you can see from the slide here, you know, back in 2017, '18, this is, the red is us and the purplish blue is, is the state of Connecticut comparison against the state. You know, 17, '18, we were below the state's prevalence rate. We were 13.1, and the state was at 14.5. March ahead to, you know, '21, '22, and then it's, we have up to this, this point, we're still tracking, and actually, it's higher now, Mr. Davis, correct?
Oh, well, we have state data, so we don't have.
But just our internal numbers are showing a higher prevalence, we're trending at a higher prevalence rate. So 17.4% for '21, '22, and that's actually climbed to about 18, 19% of the prevalence rate. So that overall numbers, roughly about 500 students that receive special education services versus where, you know, it used to be down to 300s five, six years ago. That requires support, so that requires staff, that requires maintaining, and, you know, increasing the levels of support needed to meet the needs of those students. We have counted also, and we share it here, but there's also additional slides and information on our outplace students. This line is an exceptional job of not outplacing a high number of students, which can be at a very high cost, 96,000 for tuition, 30, roughly 30,000 for transportation. Those are big numbers, and they're attributed to, you know, each student, that potentially could be its average cost for each student. So we do a good job, and currently, we have 10 students that are outplaced, and that's much lower than the other districts around us. Per people expenditure, just wanted to share against the dirt, I'll share against Southeastern Connecticut, we're still doing very well. So for the dollars that we spend, you know, on students, we're getting an exceptional turnaround. So that, that's important. You know, we're working to keep that, that number lower, 20,224. And you can see the other districts, you know, that are spending more money, we're doing better than most of those districts when it comes to, you know, our achievement and our growth scores, which is important. And then if you push that against Southeastern Connecticut, this, you know, this is not our dirt, this is just our district reference group, this is just area towns, you know, around us along the shoreline, and we're falling down, right, right in the middle. But money can cost a lot, but we're doing better than almost all of those districts when it comes to scores. So I think that's important, and that's attributed to the hard work of, you know, the staff members here, everybody that's, if you have kids and you're working with children on a daily basis. Well, last piece, I just wanted to share, because it's important, capital improvement items, this is, you know, not part of the operating budget, but separate, but Dr. Long, our facilities director who's here, has done an exceptional job of putting together and pushing forward, planning, mapping out the needs of our buildings, and, you know, things that we have to continue to provide upgrades for. So we've got a list of those up here if you want to reference. Again, these are all part of the town's capital improvement plan, we have a 10-year capital improvement plan that we're working with the town as well. More information, you know, we'll follow after, as the budget process proceeds with capital limits. This is the building itself that eventually is going to need to be overhauled, the auditorium here. So these are things that are going to be coming down the line, you know, we're going to have to be, going to have to be looking at. So just wanted to share what's on the docket for next year as it pertains to the $1.3 million in capital items. And lastly, just the timeline, Chairman Dowdman mentions the 28th of March, that will be our presentation to the Board of Finance. Each department, a town department presents to the Board of Finance, we're, a department will review our presentation as well. Then there'll be deliberations that follow with the public hearing, which will be coming up. And the Board of Finance public hearing is scheduled in April. You can see April, April 24th, which is right down there. So deliberations will occur through the end of March as well as into, in the beginning part of April, but April will be a quick month, and then we'll see where the Board of Finance lands, and then onto a budget arrangement. That, that hearing will be, will kind of the last stop of the Board of Finance on the 24th. So important timeline, and we'll continue to push information out to, you know, our community, our staff, everyone, parents, as to, you know, how this transpires, if there's any change or adjustments as well. So with that, thank you for being here this evening. Again, I want to preface, we didn't put in a ton of slides, weren't sure exactly who would be here this evening, so I want to leave it more open for questions and make sure we have enough time to get into the board meeting room for seven o'clock, where the board will potentially take action, you know, on the budget. Just so I don't forget, if people plan to stay, we can only fit 40 people in that room, that's including board members on the table. The screen is back here, just as we've done for other meetings, we'll have overflow. So if anybody wants to stay, they're welcome to sit comfortably and watch those final discussions about the Board of Ed, depending on adoption of questions that I don't have or... Yeah, yeah. So any questions? Mr. Place is turning on the microphones. If you'd like to come down and ask any questions, to share, or input, any information, please leave, give your name, your address, and you have three minutes to talk. Okay, we're going to start. Those are on. If you're going to listen, we'll go from there. Come on, Mr. Schultz.
Life is trying, I've seen, that one thing is sweet. My name is Mike Schultz, lover's name is mine, just a taxpayer, but I do follow what's going on in the education, and probably much more so than town matters. I just want to share some feeling with you, this is, you guys are working very hard for this, and I, because I do watch the meetings on Channel 22, and to be honest with you, I'm almost, if you find the time to do that, and also have a job. But I had someone that I, I knew show up at my door, tears and eyes, and wearing winter folding, freezing, asked if I could loan them 500 dollars. And I said, well, for what reason? Well, we're out of oil, and the oil company won't deliver unless I have 500 dollars. And I don't know what this reason is, but it had to be cash, no check, no credit card, cash. So I called the oil company, because it happened to be the single that I used, and asked them if they would accept my check and deliver their oil, and they said, of course. My point is that some people, I don't know how many, in town, and I really had a hard time believing it, but they were actually choosing between the medications, the food on the table, and heat. They already had a frozen pot. So whatever we can do to get this budget, which is extremely high, in my opinion, under control. I've been here for 50 years, never seen anything like it, but I also have never seen inflation like this either. I got the same problem everybody else has. 401K down 20%, boiler up 40%, health insurance, it's very, very difficult. So I, I have nothing but praise for what you're doing. As I said, this proposed budget is extremely high, and at the same time, I don't want to see 18 and a half people lose their jobs. If they're part-time employees, that's a little bit different, if you play in part-time classes. But if they are full-time employees, life is very difficult for them, and I think reinstating their positions is, is important, it's critical, it's meaningful. Obviously, they were needed at one point, and I suspect they still need it. But I think we have to find some way to account for that 1.1 million dollars. Something has to change. Maybe we can't do it this year, but we have to be able to look at it long-term and stop kicking the can down the road. You know, what I'm talking about is compensations. The compensations that are being provided, they're excessive. They're out of line with, in my opinion, with what I see going on elsewhere. So, okay, sorry. What I'm doing, I'm asking voluntarily for the 2023, 2024 of year, to freeze, to have a freeze on, on wage increases, compensations for all certified teachers, and the 17 and a half administration personnel, and this could amount to about 1.2 million dollars in savings, if that were to occur. So that's my, that's my request, and please don't take this as an insult, but this deal should be done. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak? Anyone else like to speak at the public hearing? Anybody else? Come on down, please.
Christine Maxfield, 14, Reckless Drive, Niantic, Connecticut, member of the Secretary Alliance Union. Thank you. Thank you for allowing me to appear before you once again. I am sure that this process has been difficult for each and every person for a variety of reasons, the enormity of the financial, educational, legal, and yes, human responsibility is not lost on any of us, parent, taxpayer, or employee. So once again, I'm not going to spout numbers because they're already enough swimming around in your heads, but take a deep breath, because coming right out of between your eyes is my statement, gratitude. Mostly to our students and to our teachers who have taken a moment to provide a kind word, a card, expressions of regret and sadness, and my favorite, lots of silent hugs. But my thanks to all of you as well, Mr. Newton, Ms. Faziana, Ms. Stevens, and members of the Board of Education for allowing voices to be heard, parents, students, employees, town members alike. I want to extend a special thanks to our journalists and students who made me cry, not because they had to climb on a ladder and remove dozens of ceiling kits, you can Google what those are, but because their words were so kind. Thank you to the students who came up to me in the library when this output issue was distributed and asked me to explain what happened. Thank you to the teachers who asked, what can we do? Thank you to the union representatives and the other secretaries who encouraged me to fight, because fighting is simply not my way. Thank you to the parents that I saw in church and the grocery store and the public library and restaurants when they shook their heads and asked me what happened. I just couldn't answer. Okay, I did. Beyond thank you, I do have one request of you before I leave. This year's educational buzzwords and acronyms were undoubtedly SEL and restorative practices, which clearly focus on the humanity of each child. So tonight, before I leave you, I challenge each of you, choose humanity. When the choice is between a golf cart, which requires fuel, insurance, maintenance, and a shed to keep it safe, choose that human, that human IA, that human TA, that human teacher that comes to school each day fueled, self-maintaining, and keeps your children safe before they return to their own homes every evening. Thank you. Thank you to all of you and us.
Would anybody else like to speak?
Hello, I'm Kiana St. Vincent, 18, Letchworth, Niantic, and I'm a junior at this high school. And I've been in the Eastside Public School System since kindergarten, and I can name basically every teacher and staff member I've ever had, because they made such an impact on my life and all students like me. In elementary school, I had Mr. Sean Wazir in middle school, Ms. Velasso, Mr. Matthew Wazilar, and I know every teacher and staff member I've had so far in high school, because... Zbrular, and I know every teacher and staff member I've had so far in high school because Eastline Public Schools does an amazing job employing more than just educators, field good mentors and genuine supporters, people that truly dedicate their lives to helping me and all students succeed. And it is not because of technology that I continue to succeed as a student and offer the numeric data that I know I value so highly, but because of each educator that has pushed me to succeed in and out of the classroom. It is because of my elementary library assistants, teachers and staff that I got extra help in smaller class size to overcome elementary reading curriculum setbacks. And those opportunities provided by teachers and staff and more so than computers or anything else have pushed me to develop the deep love of reading and writing. And because of that, I am successful at the high school level and joined Student Paper Microsaga. And now as a successful Honors and Ape student and the new senator, I can express to you my true beliefs of passing an extreme budget at the stand and eliminating over eighteen full-time positions will be the first step to no return in Eastline Public Schools' education quality. I am as firsthand as you can get from a student, having spent 11 of my 16 years of life in Eastline schools, and I can say without a doubt that the educators are the most vital proponent of our community and the global citizens we serve. Thank you and keep fighting for our teachers.
Thank you. Thanks for your work in the saga as well. Anyone else like to speak?
Good evening, everyone. I'm not gonna, oops, my used to this. But not gonna say a whole lot. I've heard a lot of gratitude from folks around here. I want to express that same thing.
Scott Mayhem.
Oh, I'm sorry, Scott Mayhem, president of the Eastline Teachers Association. And just one of the things that I was thinking about as we came to this night was the many people who are actually products of this educational system, myself included, many board members, Mr. Newton comes from this educational system, comes from a system of excellence. And if you think about, look where we are now. You know, it's because of the teachers here, it's because of the secretarial staff, because of the parents. And I vote gratitude tonight and you have us behind you all the way through the rest of these meetings. I know it will be hard, but we will be here for you. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak? Anyone else like to speak? Come on down.
Isabel George, $20,000. I apologize, I did not plan to speak tonight, but I just...
Isabel, just give your address again.
$20,000. Just to keep in mind that our budget increase, while the percentage does seem like a big number, we've got a little bit of our baseline. We have cut every single year as educators. We found ways to make it around cuts in the past. Our baseline is not where it needs to be, so that's why our percentage needs to match what our baseline should be for basics like technology, education, for key force users. Basic requirement, I think that everything happening needs to be for our citizens of this town. So as a parent, as a taxpayer, and as an educator, we need to make sure that our baseline is at the right point so that that percentage increase does not look that big because we need to have just the basics to get our job done. And thank you for increasing the proposed budget. I believe that we again includes that what our baseline should be.
My name is Medros Galowski, 26, White Bush Circle, Niantic, Connecticut. We have been living in Niantic for about 10 years. And my rough estimate is that our taxes are increasing 15% every year regardless whether it is inflation, there's deflation, they're increasing, 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 and increasing. And of course, schools are a significant part of those increases. And now I think the goal, meaning of this meeting is to stage this confrontation between the teachers who are needed in school and the town who is suffocating under, for many people, as it was presented, under the high taxes and high expenses. And the only story that we, yes, and we also have to give a lot of credit to teachers because many things have been done. I have two kids that are practically born through schools and there are a lot of good teachers that deserve a lot of credit. But the fact is the fact that many, many parents in this town are dissatisfied with the school system and pay their own money to send their kids. For instance, for St. Bernard's, not because they're any religious, but because they're dissatisfied with the school system. They are closing their eyes and pretending that we have a perfect system doesn't help us. And all the story that we hear year after year is this chart that nothing can be done, that nothing can be done, and the only solution is that is increasing of the budget and cutting teachers' positions. And this is the only story that we hear. New London, the turf is used all the time, evening, morning, and people pay for the use of the turf. Is anything happening in this line? Absolutely not. Our building, as far as I know, is like, is used half of the day. The second half, when I have, when I come to the, come here, not much happening in the building after 12 hours. So my point is that at a particular moment, things have to be done differently. Maybe we can cut the whole superintendent's office and try to run schools independently. There is tremendous safety. Maybe we can do different things, like for instance, Norwich has, they created public, whatever, private, I think their school is getting students from abroad that pay money, but because of our, we can try to do things differently. Is anything done differently? No, it's always the same chart. Like, old, old Niantic has this tremendous, tremendous, just program of robotics. Do we have programs like this? We can have thousands of programs, maybe, because there are tremendous resources in the town. And do we have anything happen? We have one with this chart that says nothing can be done. And I believe that it is the failure of Jeff personally and everyone in the Board of Education who approves his job. I think it is time to start thinking about resignations and bringing different people who may bring different ideas, and maybe there will be no conflict between teachers and administration. Maybe there is something can be done by different people.
We're beyond the time. Thank you. Thank you very much. Are there any other individuals that would like to speak?
Good evening. My name's Ted Burkin. My address is 15 Von Ronse, Connecticut. I'd like to start by asking, what is a community? A community is a group of people that care about each other, feel like they belong and exist together, have a shared sense of identity a lot of times. Community involves sharing, support, safety, and collaboration. Community is a concept that is fundamentally human. It's abstract, but it's human. It relies on human relationships. Budget, on the other hand, isn't as human, it's more numbers and formulas. And I understand that that is something that needs to be done, but I also realize that the budget is a structure that needs to protect our community. And I thank the Board of Ed for taking that job, that difficult job of trying to balance formulas and numbers with what our community is like here. I suggest that everyone here right now takes a minute to consider the vast web of connections that exists in this school system. None of us are alone in this world. We rely on each other's support. And as we prepare this budget, continue to deliberate upon it and eventually approve it, I urge you to keep that in mind. These people, these 18.5, and frankly, everybody on the Eastline Public Schools faculty and staff are not just random strangers. They care about each other, they trust students, they trust each other, they support each other, they collaborate, and that's powerful. It's fundamentally human. And I'd like to thank you for considering the real-life community that exists here in this school system. Together we thrive. Together we belong. For example, students trust Ms. Maxfield, all the library assistants, all the teachers and faculty, et cetera, all trust her as well. And remember, I can't stress this enough really, that's what you all are here for, to protect our community. And I'd like to end by saying that every year is not the same. This school doesn't just copy and paste every single year. We're constantly adapting to the newest technologies, the newest people, and we're constantly having new stories and, you know, new journalism pieces to write. The world constantly adapts, it's continuous adaptation all the time. And I thank the Board of Ed for protecting our students and our community. That's why you're here. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak? Anyone else like to speak? Last call for anyone else who would like to speak. If you're not seeing anyone else, I'll turn the feedback over to the chairman.
Thanks, everyone, for coming out. I appreciate all the feedback, that's really helpful. We're gonna move on to our next meeting, but we need a motion to adjourn. Second, Jill, all those favor opposed, staying, meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everyone. Safe travels and...